Good evening, everyone, and welcome to USD 305 Board of Education Meeting. Today is August 28, 2018. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next on our agenda is approval of the agenda. Dr. Hardy, are there any additions or corrections?
Madam President, we will not need an executive session for personnel.
Okay, thank you. Do I have a motion?
Madam President, I move approval of the agenda with the change noted.
Second?
Emma Doherty, second.
Moved in second to approve the change in agenda. All those in favor, raise your right hand. Motion carries, seven zero. Next on our agenda this evening is recognition and presentations of the Elementary and Secondary Teachers of the Year with Jennifer Bradford-Jernan.
Each year Salina USD 305 is honored to recognize two instructors as District Teachers of the Year. The awards are sponsored by the Kansas State Department of Education and affiliated with the National Teacher of the Year Program. Semi-finalists representing Region One will be announced at the Kansas Teacher of the Year Awards Luncheon, September 8, and state finalists are named in November. I am pleased to introduce to you our Secondary Teacher of the Year from Opportunity Now, Travis Peterson. From Fort Hays State University, Travis received his bachelor's in elementary education and his master's in special education. Beginning his seventh year teaching at Opportunity Now, he is also the head cross-country coach and assistant track coach at South High and seventh-grade boys' basketball coach at South Middle. Prior to this, Travis taught at Oakdale and South High for a total of seven years. Travis is an innovative math teacher who inspires students to extraordinary academic gains. Also serving as vocational coordinator, he develops relationships with community businesses, establishing work experiences for students that prepare them for life beyond high school. At this time, I'd like to invite Travis to the podium.
I just want to say thank you to the board for this honor and just hope that I can be able to represent our school district and our community well. I think the biggest thing that got me here is the relationships and the people I have. I'm really blessed because up here I have like my first teacher, my first grade teacher that taught me the basics, and then Mrs. Ebbell, and then Mrs. Brander who prepared me for college English and senior English at South High School. So that just kind of leads to the point that I'm here because of the teachers that I had and then the experience that I had with coworkers and also wonderful administrators. Len X. Laine also at South was one of the many wonderful administrators that I've had that have just helped shape me over the years. I'm excited to represent our district too as I see that we're moving more towards character education and, you know, teaching the whole student, which I think is really, really important. Obviously, at Opportunity Now, we deal with a very diverse student population where academics are really important, but we deal with a lot more on a daily basis of getting our kids to school, ensuring that they have a safe place. And I know that, you know, fortunately, we're becoming more aware of that because unfortunately in our community, there's a lot of kids with a lot of needs and I just, that's one of my big passions and I'm really glad to see. I know as a parent that went to the South Middle Parent Night last week, talking about all the character education stuff that they're doing there. And that's just, I'm really glad to be able to represent this district and this community. So I think in this, this is just, hopefully can be a representation of the people that have molded me and helped me and that I can go ahead and pass that on to students and coworkers that I have so that I can help them to become the best educators they can be. So I just want to say thank you very much for this opportunity.
And now I am pleased to introduce to you our Elementary Teacher of the Year from Meadowlark Ridge Elementary, J.C. Murphy. J.C. received her bachelor's in elementary education from Kansas State University and earned her master's in English Speakers of Other Languages from Fort Hays State University. Before joining the kindergarten team at Meadowlark Ridge six years ago, she taught fifth grade at Stewart Elementary. J.C.'s classroom management is exceptional and she celebrates and corrects students' behaviors with love and respect. She creates a learning environment that celebrates individuality while at the same time provides the structure and organization needed by all of her students. I'd like to invite J.C. to the podium.
I just want to say thank you. It is a huge honor to be given this award and I want to accept it as a representation of all of the educators because I see them on a daily basis just showing up for the kids and it's not just me, it's my team, it's my school, it's all of the schools in the community. So it is a true honor to be able to accept this award. And I do want to tell you, because, you know, storytelling is my thing, I've always known that I've wanted to be a teacher and I remember being in kindergarten at Stewart and I think my kindergarten teacher's name was Mrs. Larson and she had her finger, like from the knuckle up, pulled off by a dog leash or something and so her finger was like this and I thought that to be a teacher, you had to be missing that part of your finger. And so my mom tells stories about me being at home with my little chalkboard with my finger curved down like this because that is for sure what I knew, what I wanted to do. So here I am, a kindergarten teacher with a full pointer finger. Thank you very much. I'm honored to accept.
In this evening, we have special gifts and recognitions to present to you at this time. We greatly appreciate the support our local businesses give to this program. In the gift bag, you will find a custom-made watch sponsored by Riad D. Johnson, Justin's, and a gift certificate donated by Martinelli's. The second envelope contains the H.E. and Irma Lee Nuss Teacher of the Year Award. Each of you receives a $500 check in recognition of your efforts on behalf of Salina Schools. This is the 27th year for these awards, made possible by the Nuss family. H.E. Nuss was the assistant principal at Central High for 10 years and a Kansas educator for 28 years. Irma Lee Nuss, who recently passed away, was a librarian at USD 305 for 11 years and a Kansas educator for 37 years. She began her teaching career at age 18 in a one-room schoolhouse. Her son, Lawton Nuss, who is chief justice of the Kansas Supreme Court, continues to honor his parents' legacy with the Nuss Teacher of the Year Award. We greatly appreciate his generosity and support. The Board of Education presented to you an engraved plaque as a memento of your selection as Teachers of the Year, and during the 2018-19 school year, your pictures will hang in this meeting room and your names have been added to the perpetual plaque on the wall. Congratulations.
We have minutes of August 14, 2018, regular meeting, personnel report, treasures report, investment report, journal entries, approve encumbrance listing to blackboard in the amount of $45,457.29 for the annual renewal for maintenance, upgrade, and support for the web publishing systems. Approval of HVAC repair with Knip services, time Kansas train, to authorize an open purchase order to Knip services in the amount of $35,000 to be used to debit ongoing physical year 19 repair charges. Approve HVAC technical support with building controls and services, known as BCS, to authorize an open purchase order to building controls and services in the amount of $60,000 to be used to debit ongoing physical year 19 repair charges. And approve Heartland Early Education gift request for a Thomas Bus estimated between $15,000 and $20,000 in classroom materials estimated under $10,000 as a result of the Junction City Head Start Program closure. Do I have a motion to accept approval of the consent agenda items?
Madam President, I move that we accept the consent agenda items as read.
Okay, thank you. Second? Jim? Second? Any discussion? All those in favor, raise your right hand. Motion carries, seven zero. Moving on to public forum, this time, if there's anyone out there that would like to come and speak at the public forum, this is the time to do so. Not seeing anyone, we will move forward to action agenda. Central High International Thesbian Out-of-State Field Trip with Chad Newlick.
Always get nervous to talk in front of people. Hey, I'm back, asking to go to Lincoln, Nebraska. It's a wonderful trip. This will be, this next summer will be our 11th year going. We usually have between 10 to 20 kids go, just kind of depending on the year, if we bring anything. They get the opportunity to audition for scholarships, they get the opportunity to audition for many colleges throughout the United States. They take several classes taught by professionals, college professors, other teachers. They also get the opportunity to, this past year, we had one student run for a national leadership position to which she received. And so plenty of opportunities and as always, my rest assurance thing is that boys stay in one dorm and girls stay in the other and it makes sleeping a lot easier, I suppose.
Are there any questions? Gary?
Not a question, but I'm ready to make a motion unless there's any questions.
Okay. Anyone with a question? Gary?
I move that we approve the Central High Thesbian trip to Lincoln, Nebraska on June 24 through June 30, 2019, as presented.
Second? Jim? Any further discussion? Which was none? All those in favor, raise your right hand. Motion carries, seven zero.
Thank you.
Good luck, have fun.
Will do.
Okay. Moving to our next item on the agenda is the 2018-2019 Handbook for Certified Teachers with Erin Wright.
Good evening. I'm back tonight for another handbook change now that we've adopted the negotiated agreement for the 2018-2019 school year. What you have in your packet are the changes to the Retired Teachers Handbook, which follows largely in step with the negotiated agreement. There are a few differences in that handbook, which is why we have a different one, but the changes that we made are exactly the same as the changes that were presented to you for the negotiated agreement. The changes, as a reminder, we amended the section allowing for additional staff development days for small group PLCs and we removed the one-per-semester limitation. We changed the leave plan available for certified teachers in the district and that has been placed into the new Retired Teachers Handbook as well. And the new early notification incentive, the newer, earlier notification incentive, I guess, that provides an earlier date of notification for $750 who provide notice if their intent to resign, retire before the first, the last contract day of the first semester.
Any questions?
I should point out-
I'm sorry?
I'm sorry. I should point out that there were a couple, there was a typo in the packet that you were sent. Article 9, other subsection A or section A, for some reason, is titled illness, but we can clearly see that nothing under that section is related to illness. Not sure what happened there. It should read and has been corrected to liquidated damages.
Any comments or questions? Jim?
Madam President, I move that we approve the 2018-2019 Handbook for Certified Staff Retired Educators as presented.
Second? We have a motion and a second. Any comments or questions? All those in favor, raise your right hand. Motion carries, seven zero.
Thank you.
Okay, we're on to Salina Area Technical College lease and security agreement with Erin.
As you all know, since 2009, Salina Area Technical College has been leasing the property of their campus from us. That lease was set to expire September 1 of 2018. We have spoken with the parties from Salina Area Technical College and they would like to renew that lease for another year, which could then be renewed at the end of the 20, this is 2018-2019 school year, for an additional year, should they choose to pursue that. With that, they have proposed, we have discussed some amendments to the original lease as many of the items contained in the original lease are no longer valid or in place. Many of them had to do with the setup of the new school when it transitioned and that has clearly taken place and they met and satisfied those. There were some additional changes in the lease, which I think you, in the amendment, which I think you have in your packet. There has been one addition that came in late last night from the board over at Salina Area Technical College. If you'll look to section one on the first page of the amendment, it's titled Term of Lease. At the very bottom of that first paragraph, they would like to add the following language. Except as otherwise provided herein, this amendment does not alter the original transfer of ownership rights to the lease executed July 1 of 2009. All they are wanting is to memorialize that the plan is still, once there is no longer a lease in place, that the property will transfer as was intended in the original amendment, in the original lease agreement.
Where, Jim, will that be placed? At the end of section one?
Section one, titled Term of Lease. It will be the last sentence in the paragraph.
All right, thank you.
So given that, we're proposing that you accept the amendment to the lease agreement and presented with that change.
Any questions or comments? Motion? Gary?
Madam President, I move that we approve the extension of the lease agreement with SATC and the other accompanying amendments to the agreement as presented with the change as noted.
Okay. Second?
Emma Doherty, second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion at all? All those in favor, raise your right hand. Motion carries, seven zero.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Move to our discussion agenda. We have none. We'll move on to school board reports and upcoming dates of importance. Saturday, September 8, we have Teacher of the Year banquet at the Salina Country Club to honor our Teachers of the Year, and I'm looking forward to meeting with both of them over a lovely dinner and a lovely outing. Wednesday, October 3, is KASB Fall Regional Meeting at Person at 5:00 PM. And I'll start with Carol this time.
All right. Gabe and I both attended the CKCIE Board of Control Meeting on August 15. Mike Lowers began that meeting with some facts and statistics about the Central Kansas Cooperative in Education, and I thought I would share some of those with you. The Co-op was founded in 1971. It consists of essentially the same 12 districts that founded it. It covers 46 individual buildings, over 4,000 square miles, employs more than 600 employees, over 200 of those are certified, has a monthly payroll of over $2 million, does not own its own vehicles or buildings, and depends for financing on federal and state funds, which at this time amount to 83% of its funding. The rest is made up by assessments from the individual districts that participate. So with that in mind, we move to something that's happening currently, and that is that the Co-op was randomly selected this summer, Mike always questions random, was randomly selected this summer for participation in a legislative post audit of special education costs in Kansas. There were eight entities across the state selected for a three-stage process. Number one, a 1% random sample of individual educational plans were collected, representing a variety of exceptionalities. For our Co-op, this was 30 of 3,031 students. Secondly, there was a collection of various kinds of information about the Co-op, including salaries, benefits, transportation costs, facility upgrades, number of hours given to writing IEPs, and so on and so on and so on. It did amount to a considerable amount of work on the part of the people in the Co-op. And the third thing was an onsite evaluation. Now, the upshot of all of this is supposedly that there will be a report to the legislature of the average cost per category for educating a special education student in Kansas above the cost for general education. So we'll see how that comes out. It should be rather interesting. Also, it was mentioned that there were some, and this was as of mid-August, I don't know, Mike, if these positions have been filled. Certified positions remaining to be filled were 6.5 speech-language pathologists, a teacher at Lakewood for the emotionally and behaviorally disordered, and a high-incidence SPED teacher, which means mild to moderate special education needs at Sunset. We filled those other two?
Nope, still open.
Still open, okay. And the other thing that we did considerably was assisting people, how can we assist people to become interested in special education? And also, we discussed at some length the potential impact of our current political environment on funding for education in Kansas, of course, including special ed funding. So it's always an interesting meeting and much goes on. It's terrific. And Gabe, I think, enjoyed it, did you not, sir?
Yeah, it was a great group of superintendents and interesting to learn.
It really is.
Carol's been there a little longer than me, so I have some things to pick up on.
We're going to be splitting the duties here as Gabe gets his feet wet, so.
Attended the boardmanship meeting and also the opening ceremony like the rest of us did for South High and it was really tremendous and wonderful. So it was fantastic.
Right. Gabe?
Attended the playground dedication at Coronado Elementary School with the new swing set. They were full of students while we were there and looked like everyone was enjoying that. Ribbon cutting along with everyone else last night at South High School. And like Carol mentioned, CKCIE Board of Control Meeting.
Okay, thank you. Ann?
I attended the Smoky Hill Education Service Center meeting. It was on a different day than usual, but everyone was celebrating the start of school and all the new activities in the many districts that the Smoky Hill Education Service Center serves. I also attended the South High ribbon cutting, of course, and I'm sure like especially Carol wouldn't say, it was completely a new world there at South High. I started there the second year it was open and it's not the same, no. Thank you.
Jim?
Attended the tour and ribbon cutting at South High yesterday, also the boardmanship 1.1 that was held here, and then the Coronado Playground dedication.
Okay, thank you. Gary?
Along with everyone else, I was blown away about with the open house at South High. I really think that's going to be a great building for years and years. I also, with help of Mr. Shulman, led a tour at Central High with some folks who were, didn't quite have the mobility to want to take part in the open house last spring, little older folks, but it was interesting to hear some of them who had attended Salina High on the very first day it was open in '52, I believe. There was nice hearing from them. A couple of former board members were involved from the '70s and they're going to, we're going to go through South also. They were, again, a little intimidated about the big crowd, but we'll go through South in a couple of weeks and see what they think about that. Both tours were very enjoyable.
Thank you for doing that. I attended a Salina Education Foundation Board meeting and it was basically general discussion, an overview of 305 Live and what changes we might want- discussion, an overview of 305 Live, and what changes we might want to make, and what changes we might, or things that we might keep the same. So, that's on the table right now there, and nothing else to report. Attended a KESA meeting, K-E-S-A, with the District Learning Team, and that's inspiring. I don't know what other word to use with that. Attended Coronado ribbon cutting. If you add what was given a couple, three years ago, and what they added now, there's $80,000 worth of playground equipment sitting out at Coronado, and it is truly amazing, and the kids were all over the place. They were just like little ants on sugar. So, it was great. Attended a KESB Legislative Meeting Saturday in Topeka. We are looking at what changes to make to the legislative policy that we have, and we've recommended some changes, and those will be coming out for this board to look at, hopefully by November, so we can take a vote on how we want to vote in our meeting, our conference in Kansas City. I also went to the South ribbon cutting, had a very nice conversation with one of the architects. It was an integral part of the planning at the very beginning, and he was standing there just watching everything going on with this totally satisfied look on his face with everything. And so, we had a wonderful conversation, and he really likes how everything turned out. He thinks it's beautiful. And I want to note again, Chris Upson for being our bond leader on that and taking care of business. Did a great job. Thank you. Went to the Chamber of Commerce with Dr. Hardy, and he did a presentation for the Chamber of Commerce there with his little slideshow that he had for our opening meeting, and it was well-received, and the mayor wants a copy of that, by the way. So, visited with him, and he would like that for when they talk to other new people coming into Salina. And also went to Foundations of Boardmanship 1.1 with the members that attended. So, that's all I have. Dr. Hardy?
Madam President, I want to thank the folks that went to the Boardsmanship 1.1. It was really review in a lot of ways, I think, but being able to sit at the table with board members from other places was very interesting. Every school district is different. That's what we kind of saw, we heard that. Also, of course, the ceremony last evening in the open house was just phenomenal. As I walked around the building for two hours, whatever long it was, you know, you just didn't want to leave. It was unsolicited, folks just wanted to come up and talk about it and tell me all their experiences and how they thought it was such an impressive place, and it was just affirming over and over, and it was just, people were thanking us for giving our students such a great place to go to school. So, that was very awesome. I want to compliment Mr. Showman on his tweet that he sent out that, about Salina High, Salina High South and Salina High Central, that we have two premier school districts that are new and improved in different ways in our community, and I don't think there's anyplace else in our state that can boast of that. So, it's pretty impressive. Well done, Mr. Showman, on that. We had a meeting just recently with Dell Dennis, and I'd like to share a few things with you that he shared with us that you might appreciate. For the last two years, you know, part of our effort with the new money that the state has given us is really to increase our salaries, because we knew that Kansas got all the way down to 44th in ranking for average teaching salaries. But just so you know, we have moved up to 40th from 44th. See, Nebraska, the contiguous states is what they're talking about, that that's where we need to be. I wouldn't hold your breath on it. Nebraska's 30th, Colorado's 31st, Kansas is 40th, and we passed up Missouri, which is 41st. And then, as we always like to say, thank God for Oklahoma, because they're 50th. The nice thing for us locally is that we went from 128th to 50th in the state for our starting salaries. So, we made really good progress in that. The other thing I just want to share with you is that Dell Dennis was talking already ahead of time about what could happen with the legislature, because that's what he does, and he wants us to talk to our local legislators to get them thinking about it. So, the Supreme Court really kind of complimented the legislature on their efforts as far as coming up with new funding for public schools, but they also said that their work wasn't done, because remember, they did not, the legislature did not take into account the CPI or the inflation. So, Dell Dennis has been working on that a little bit, so we have something to work with, we can talk with our legislators about. Specifically, here's what he shared, and I think you might find this interesting. So, April, May, and June, they, the tax revenues were ahead of the estimates by over $300 million. So, it's expected July 1 that the state will end with a $447 million surplus, and that hasn't happened for a long time. You might remember, we had a governor who put us on a shoestring budget, and everybody was cutting the whole time. So, that's a good deal, because his discussion is that with the, if they put in the inflation funds that would go, that the Supreme Court expects, that would more than cover that. And remember, that just goes to July 1. We still have all fall, and tax revenues have been ahead for quite a while. So, what he was telling us is that we should be talking to our legislators and help them to realize that the funding is there to meet the Supreme Court's requirement to handle inflation as a part of the funding formula. So, that's encouraging. That's a good part of that. And just another thing, I forgot, Kansas is 10th in the nation for academic success for students. That's kind of a good thing to be proud of. Last week, my highlights, of course, have been going around to the buildings for a lot of the opening ceremonies and the first assemblies, and I was invited to come to Stewart and talk to them. It was their superhero. That's their theme for this year. So, Ms. Reberg had all the students in the gym, of course, and she got them, you know, calmed down, and everything was going well. And then, it was my turn to get up and speak, and so I talked to them about being superheroes, you know, that we have superheroes, all adults in that building that love the students and care for them. And then I talked about how they could be a superhero, and it was about being kind. So, what I did was, I made, I was kind of devious, I think. I made a couple of signs. One said "be," one said "kind," and I found a couple of students that were charismatic. We thought it would be fun. So, you have one side of the gym and the other side of the gym. One student would hold up a sign that said "be," and the other student would hold up to say "kind." And I don't think Ms. Reberg knew what she was getting herself into when she asked me to do this. So, by the time after, they were doing it for a while, the gym was so loud, the teachers were holding their ears, but the kids were having a great time. But the thing was that I really appreciate in that school, being kind is one of their mantras that they live by, and I've seen that around our district quite a bit. I think it was cottonwood last year, that was their shirts, was be kind. So, I think what a great thing for us to mentor for our students that that's important. The last thing, as we talk about Salina South High School 2.0, it was really, really interesting, I thought, last evening, to talk to people as to how they came up with the school colors, the mascot, the fight song. It was just fascinating to hear all the details of that, and how many people took credit for it. I'm not sure. I thought that was fascinating as well. So, what a great, what a great day it was. That's all I have, Madam President.
Okay, thank you. Next is executive session for attorney-client privilege. Do I have a motion?
We need to know how long.
Well, we need a five-minute break, and then, how long? 20 minutes? 20 minutes?
Madam President, I move the Board of Education go into executive session at 5:40 for 20 minutes for the purpose of discussing personnel matters of non-elected personnel and their contractual obligations. Oops, I'm in personnel, going down to attorney-client. Erase that. That was the top one. I move that the Board of Education go into executive session at 5:35 for 40, or 5:40 for the, for, here we go again. 20 minutes for the purpose of consultation with board legal counsel on matters which are privileged in the attorney-client relationship, which if discussed in open session would waive that privilege, and that the Board of Education reconvene into open session at 6 o'clock in the board conference room.
Okay. Do I have a second?
Second.
Anne?
Yes, thank you.
Motion in a second. All those in favor, raise your right hand. Motion carried. We will adjourn for five minutes and reconvene in executive session. Thank you for coming this evening, all of you.